To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Room call?
Mayor Ader is not here. Raydine Carrico?
Present.
Danny Clark?
Present.
Mark McAtee? Dana Strange?
Here.
Attorney Stephen Timberball?
Present.
Uh, Park Attorney Laurie Carrico is here, and Mike Engelmann is?
Present.
Minutes of the previous meeting, if anybody should have a copy of the March tenth meeting. If anybody has had a chance to look it over, ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented. If there's no changes or corrections.
Make a motion.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Under new business, uh, personnel, police department, um, we have a recommendation for termination of an officer, so I'm asking for a motion, for that termination.
Make a motion.
You have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Also under personnel, utility department, Bo. You have some recommendations for the board of works?
Yeah, we had two full-time positions open. I'd recommend, uh, Mitch Harder and Casey Taylor. Full-time positions and a part-time position for Jamison Wagner. And I do have an alternative that was not interviewed in case we have a decline on the, uh, full-time.
So one of the full-time is replacing someone who resigned, and the other one is going to be a body that replaces, or your retirement coming in July.
Right. As I stated, if we have one decline, then I have an alternative. If we go with that.
Okay. Who has the alternative?
He hasn't been interviewed. His name, Joel Morse.
Joel Morse. We did conduct interviews of these prospective employees last week. Board of Works members and myself, Bo and Daniel. So everybody's satisfied with those recommendations. I would ask for a motion to accept. I make the most of it.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
We also have under new business stormwater proposal for Behind the Wire.
So I was approached by the owners of Behind the Wire and their contractor. Uh, so they've completed ninety percent of the construction of their new facility behind the wire. There's been a lot of concrete poured, but existing around the church area has always been gravel. They possibly have money left over from their project. They're wanting to take out the sidewalks, landscape, uh, in the gravel area and make that all concrete, blend it all in. We've got a twelve-inch storm sewer that's in the scope of work on both sides, on Dewey and West Washington. They approached us to see if we would entertain the idea of replacing the storm sewer before they put the new concrete down. Including the replacement of the approximately two hundred feet twelve-inch storm sewer. Their project cost was sixty thousand five hundred fifty dollars. They're asking us to entertain the stormwater project. A portion of that is sixteen thousand two hundred dollars.
Is there protocol for this type of request, or is this something that needs to be done by the way? Protocol in the past, or is this something just, it needs to be done regardless?
It's judgment call, and my judgment, I think it needs to be done. We've been putting down a lot of new concrete, and it's prone to failure. It's, I don't know how old the storm sewer is there. It's had some places where have been failures. It's just a judgment call. I would strongly encourage you, if we've got the funds, to replace it. It's in the scope of their project.
The funds would come out of?
Stormwater, most likely.
Is this the quote?
Yes.
That's the only one we got?
That's from their construction, their contractor, and he'd be doing the work.
You say they got some money left from their project, Bo?
Yes.
Think they'd entertain paying half of the force, or?
I'm asking to entertain that idea. I think they're looking for as much help as they can get.
Yeah, we are too, I guess.
And I understand that, that at the same time, yes, I think, I would strongly recommend replacing it because anytime you cover something up like that, you're asking for failure. And then we're stuck cutting concrete, which isn't a problem, but it's blending everything back in, making it go back proper.
Do you know by chance?
I don't think the grant money can really pay for the storm sewer itself. It can pay for the concrete piece of it, but the storm sewer could be the city's storm sewer, right? So this project can't pay for the storm sewer piece. The additional money that's left over is, would be what we're going to see for approval to have the concrete and the paving piece done afterwards. But they didn't want to do that if the storm sewer was in bad shape, and that's why we came to Bo and the city in regards to the storm sewer itself.
I'm kind of perplexed a little bit. I, this is exactly what I talked to the mayor a little bit about, not necessarily this project, but like, if we decide to go start repaving stuff and we get more money from the crossroads, right, uh, to start repaving, I said it doesn't make sense to repave something if the storm drains underneath are crap. Right? Because we'll all just have to go back in there and fix it later on. So we should look at it from a section standpoint and maybe one block at a time going up North Line Street. Well, this is exactly what we're talking about. We already know it's going to be junk underneath there. It needs to be fixed. But I don't, I mean, I'm having a problem with us paying it, I guess, even though it would be our problem in the long run. Does that make sense? Because it goes right back to what I was talking to the mayor about, and it's something we need to do. We need to start looking forward about that. So. And we'd rather everybody come talk to us about it, right? I mean, if they, if they're going to do a construction thing and they want to make sure it's tied into the storm drains and things like that, we want to be aware of it.
Yeah, if someone has a gravel driveway and they're getting ready for concrete, I would always encourage them to replace the culvert pipe. If it's an addition, when they put the concrete down, because you know what's going to happen.
What would require a final approval with council, but if, if, uh, what about Danny's suggestion? Don't have on it. If they would pick up the other half, if Bo talks to him and sees that's feasible, you think that's feasible or no?
Yes, um, I'm sure we'd probably work some numbers around and come to an agreement possibly. If we supply the material, they supply the labor, I don't know. I know we don't have time to do that.
I'd run that across to Bo, and then we supply the material, they take care of the labor and stuff. I guess that's fair.
So what's the motion?
What Danny said.
Materials, they do the labor, is there still?
We still cost the material, right?
Yeah, to go back and, and question with, uh, we paid for the material.
And they pay for the labor.
I will meet with them tomorrow. Approach them with that proposal.
And we would only concern this because they're a nonprofit? I mean, I'm asking, I don't know. Is that how we're going to approach it in the future, if something else comes towards us?
Well, it's always too little, too late, but I think there needs to be some policies and procedures put in place. We're going to be hit more and more with this kind of stuff as people go through more projects and construction.
And we want to know about it, so.
Well, I mean, I, I don't like the idea of putting something down like this on top of an old infrastructure.
Just like what I talked to the mayor about, yeah.
So the motion is, we supply the material, we supply the labor. You have a second on that? Or is this just consensus? You just need a consensus down there?
We don't need to vote. Do they say yes or no?
Okay.
Well, if they agree to that, is it a go-ahead green flag for them? They're, they're wanting to stay on the construction while they're, they don't want to pull off the job and then come back. So if they're in agreement to that, we can go ahead with the project. We're helping them with this project.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
Next up is utility adjustments. If anybody wants to have a copy, if you signed off on them.
Inclusive in the utility adjustments, there are some write-offs.
I'm okay with it. I'll make the motion.
You're going to sing it?
My second.
All in favor? Next up is department reports. Who's first? Who's on first, who's on second?
I'm good. Um, public works department, we had eighty-four service calls, two hundred thirty-eight line locates. We produced fourteen point four eight million gallons of water with an average of four hundred sixty thousand gallons per day. We sold two Davies County Rural Water seven point four million gallons. We had twenty-five point five five million gallons treated at the wastewater plant. Puts us at eighty-two percent. We had an average daily flow of eight hundred and twenty-four thousand gallons.
Uh, so as a department, we had a hundred and forty-six activities or calls for service. We had one arrest, we had eight cases or reports made off of those calls, and we wrote five citations this month.
For March, we had a total of seventy-seven runs. We had twenty-one medical and fifty-six were fire-related. Twenty-seven of those were from the storm that night. We had twenty-seven calls come in, trees down, power lines, things like that, so.
Justin Davis, building commissioner, could not be here. He did tell me or give me, uh, his report, five building permits, issued eleven ordinance violation letters to property owners, reference unsafe trash and junk. That are all the department reports. Essential business? Nothing under essential business, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Second?
My second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Being adjourned, so we'll get ready for the council meeting. Thank you. Hello, council meeting with pledge?
Pledge will do as it is in the White, United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Room call?
Mayor Brian Ader is not here. Mike Engelmann?
Present.
Carol Rayhill?
Here.
Mark McAtee is not here. Jerry Holland?
Here.
Dave Smith?
Here.
Attorney Stephen Timberball?
Present.
Park Attorney Laurie Carrico is present.
First up, minutes from the March tenth meeting. If anybody has a copy, if there's no addition, changes, or correction, ask for a motion to accept as presented. You want to make some motion?
I say.
You have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Claims and allowances? Everybody should have a copy of those. Also received an electronic copy, if you had a chance to review them, accept as presented.
The only thing that had changed, I think, since what I sent you electronically is, we did get the Pay App for the Park Pavilion, but we didn't get it till today, so it's on there. So the number, if you look at the total at the back, it's going to be a little larger than it was when you got it in email.
I make the motion. I have a motion by Dave.
My second.
Second, so all in favor?
Aye.
There's nothing under old business. We do have several things under new business. Wastewater Treatment Plant, um, it's the Wesler proposal that you brought to us last month, direct vote?
Yes. So brought forward to you last month, our findings of, uh, kind of a draft proposal of converting some of the technology in the wastewater treatment plant. The way it's ran manually over to a SCADA system, and this evening we had Dean and Brian with Wesler here to help us walk through some of this. Are there any specific questions?
I don't have any from last month. I didn't have a chance to review the information provided, so I'll hope everybody else can.
We don't have any new information per se, but I think we've got a stronger proposal of how they want to appro, how to approach, and how to implement the project. Is that correct?
Sure. Um, if you mind if I?
No, you've got the foreword.
Okay, so, uh, that, that study was conducted to kind of assess the current situation of the wastewater treatment plant. To kind of understand where we could go, what are the, what are the next steps, and take a snapshot of what's there, and then try to identify, um, the best next steps to migrate from having no centralized SCADA system to having a baseline SC, centralized SCADA system. So the next logical step is, is going to be a design, a small design package with specifications and drawings so that we can go out and receive competitive bidding, uh, for some of the, some of the items that need to be installed so that they can centralize the, all of the plant, um, process information, and then we can display it to the, to the operators inside the lab and inside the administration building. That's the next logical step. Uh, so there, there would be a proposal. Um, we're finalizing some of our numbers, but there'll be a proposal that'd be given, uh, for consideration, probably at the next meeting. Uh, that would, that would outline the design portions of that project, and then how it progresses from design into the quoting phase, into the bid or the, the collection of, of, um, of bids for that project, and then how to, how to implement those things. Again, I want to be clear that that was a study, not technically a proposal.
These are just estimates?
These are, those are construction cost estimates that we're, we're trying to work on finalized numbers.
So you're not asking for any action, just to be coming back?
Just answer any questions, um, if you had anything from the study itself. You know, there's, there's two different construction cost estimates there. Since, since the, the draft of, of that study, uh, we've kind of selected, there's two different numbers, there are two different kind of approaches to how we would get the, the telemetry systems used and to get all the information back to the administration building, and we've selected one of the two there. Again, we'll have a better breakdown.
The benefit of this project, long-term?
So it allows a largely manually operated, uh, wastewater treatment plant from each site to be, at least the information can be centralized, where you can view the process variables for the site in one location. So instead of, instead of going to each site and seeing, like, the RAS building, you have an overview screen of what's going on, uh, from a, from a ten-thousand-foot level. You can understand how the processes are interacting with each other. And it allows the operators to visually see what's happening at, at your RAS, WAS station and clarifiers without having to leave the administration building for monitoring. Uh, as the design goes, we can have discussions about what's monitored and what's controlled. But the, the original thought that Bo and I talked about was to give the information to the operators so that they can at least see what's going on at the plant in, in one location.
Those things are being done now, but just at multiple locations, you have to go different. This is more of a?
It's physically being done, and if, if there's a failure in between site visits, it's displayed right in front of them versus periodic visits.
How often does that happen? A lot, or?
It can. I mean, as the equipment ages, you're going to have more failure. And we're, a lot of that stuff is forty years old, some of it's only about twenty-two, twenty-three years old. So it's kind of split, but there, there's always failures electronically, electrically. We've had several underground wires burn up recently. It's just part of the aging process.
Will this show you where those, where this is happening at?
It will show us the failure. It may not show us exactly where the failure occurred at, yes.
I'm just looking at the cost. Are the advantages, do they outweigh potential costs in this one, I'm asking?
In the long run, yes. Yeah, if you catch something before it's failure.
Yeah.
One of the other benefits, um, is that this is a baseline system that'll give, um, kind of just baseline control. You can always add to the system. We don't necessarily design anything that you can that isn't scalable. So you can also, uh, we can throttle back a little bit on the initial install, uh, kind of see the benefit, and then add to it later if we wanted to do that. And the other thing, uh, that would be beneficial, um, you know, your live station monitoring too can also be brought into this in the second or third phase, which might help with, you know, we talked about frequency of, of visits. You talk, you start talking about collection systems and being that far out, uh, having that information being broadcast back into the plant, being able to alarm off of that might be beneficial for the operators as well.
Additionally, as things are being upgraded in the future, this is technology that's going back into place, and that this is what's being made available by the manufacturers. They realize that SCADA systems are in place in the majority of wastewater treatment plant, in the majority of any treatment plant. So it's just keeping up with technology. We've had SCADA system out of the water treatment plant for probably forty years. And there, it's, it's very beneficial. It'll also alert us day and night through cellular or cellular telephones. If there's a alarm, it will ring out to us.
We're going to this two hundred ninety-eight thousand. Is that total, what you're, basically roughly the total cost of the whole thing to get it done, installed, up going?
Those are the construction costs. That doesn't include the design costs, and that's, that's where we're. So the, when we finalize the numbers, it won't, there's some portions of the construction costs that'll, that will be included in Wesler's scope because there's things that we can do, um, uh, that, that are part of that number, but there, there's an additional design cost associated with that as well.
Ballpark on that?
Design, well, just, so there's three different phases. If we go through the design, there's the, the design, the bid, and the, and the construction administration. Ballpark, roughly thirty or forty thousand, maybe on design. The other two are, are a little bit less than that because we don't anticipate this being a big, uh, a big package. So the design component of it is probably meat and potatoes at hand. I would have numbers tonight, except for there's a couple things that we need to finish up with some of the suppliers of that equipment and make sure that their numbers, everybody's numbers are being affected right now because of the political climate or the, what's going on with tariffs and that sort of thing. So I haven't gotten the final numbers. Uh, once I get that out, I'll hand them off to Bo and get them to you as soon as I can.
Then you'll be back at the next meeting for, for final action numbers. The main paper this comes from? The main paper this would come from?
Wastewater.
Wastewater. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
See you at the next meeting. Uh, stormwater proposal Behind the Wire that was discussed in the board of works meeting, did anybody on the council have any further questions? Suggestions on that?
I need to kind of follow up what Dana said. Uh, does this open us up for everyone in town wanting this done at some point? City being responsible for it?
I think if somebody's doing land improvements, it's something that we need to entertain case by case. So yes and no.
I tell you yes, or I tell John no, you know, it's basically.
Some of it would depend on the infrastructure itself. If, if John's building something on Block A and the infrastructure doesn't warrant replacement, then I guess the answer would be no. In this case, I know that we've had several failures before construction. We've been up there several times on the Dewey Street portion of it, blowing it out with our back truck. They have replaced about forty foot of that, forty to fifty foot of that already, where they poured their concrete drive. And I do know that there's a lot of ponding and drainage, drainage issues on the West Washington side. They did replace about a forty-foot section in that already as well. They did replace about a 40-foot section in that already as well where they, that was all within the scope of their project. There was broken up concrete with a drain hole, about a four-inch drain hole going into that 12-inch. And it's constantly plugged up and it was a safety hazard as well. And that's all been, those improvements have been made already.
I know you said you thought it was necessary, so I'm good with that. I just want to make sure the city's kind of...
Yeah, anytime you do anything that's an improvement, there's a lot of people going to want to jump on the bandwagon and... And I know it's hard to say yes, it's hard to say no. But I look at it as a standpoint of they're putting down about six inches of concrete and it, but I think it's probably close to $250 a yard now, I may be mistaken. They can get eaten up pretty quick. That's $16,000 replacing the existing stormwater project that we strongly feel will fail on a $60,000 project. If we have to go in there and replace that storm sewer, that's added money in the future that we're going to have to replace that concrete.
Thank you, Bo. Next, we have Joe White from Sullivan Development. It was about pilot ordinance that the city attorney's office is in. Go ahead and read it here.
An ordinance approving payments in lieu of tax for Oak Street Village and Affordable Housing Project and approving and authorizing other actions in connection therewith. Whereas Indiana Code 36-1814.3 and 36-2623 authorizes the City Council of the City of Legote, Indiana to adopt an ordinance to require a property owner to pay payments in lieu of tax at times set forth in the ordinance with respect to real property that is subject to an exemption under Indiana Code 61.11016.7. And whereas that Indiana code provides for a property tax exemption for a project where the improvements on the real property were constructed, rehabilitated, or acquired for the purpose of providing housing to income-eligible persons under the Federal Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Program under 26 U.S.C. 42. And the real property is subject to an extended use agreement under 26 U.S.C. 42 as administered by the Indiana Housing and Community Development Authority. And the owner of the property has entered into an agreement to make payments in lieu of taxes under the Act. And whereas Oak Street Village Limited Partnership and Indiana Limited Partnership or its successors or signees has acquired or will acquire certain real estate in Martin County, Indiana, located at 505-507 North Oak Street, Legote, Indiana, and identified as a parcel number and upon which owner desires to develop a 50-unit affordable housing facility and daycare facility which owner has represented will be owned and operated as an affordable housing facility pursuant to Federal Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Program under 26 U.S.C. 42 with an extended use agreement that is expected to continue for 35 years after completion of construction. And whereas the city and owner desire to enter into a pilot to facilitate the project and provide additional affordable housing in the city, and whereas the terms and conditions of the pilot are contained in Exhibit A, which include without limitations an annual payment equal to $5,000 during the 15-year pilot payment period. And whereas the city recognizes and agrees that in accordance with the Act, the percentage generated by dividing the annual pilot payments by the amount of the property taxes that would have been paid to the city if the project was not subject to an exemption from property taxation shall be the percentage of the property taxes required to be paid by the owner to the city on an annual basis during the term of the pilot agreement. And whereas pursuant to and in accordance with the Act, the city desires to authorize and enter into the pilot agreement. Now therefore be ordained by the City Council, the City of Legote, Indiana, that the foregoing recitals are fully incorporated herein by this reference. It is hereby found that the acquisition of the real estate and construction of the project will be of benefit to the health or general welfare of the city and its citizens and does comply with the purpose and provisions of the Act. The pilot agreement is hereby approved by the city and the owner shall make the annual pilot payments in accordance with the terms of the pilot agreement, which is conditioned upon, among other things, the owner receiving a property tax exemption for the project pursuant to Indiana Code 61.11016.7. In accordance with the Act, the pilot payments shall be deposited in the city's housing trust fund established under Indiana Code 52515.5. If such fund shall be established by the city or distributed to the overlapping taxing units, if the city should not elect to establish a housing trust fund. The owner has consented to the terms of the pilot agreement and the pilot payment, which shall be illustrated by the city executive or his or her designee and the owner executing the pilot agreement in substantially the same form of the attached, subject to the necessary and appropriate updates and revisions agreed to by the city and the owner. The city executive is authorized and directed to execute the pilot agreement approved herein after it has been finalized by the city's executive. Execution is hereby confirmed on behalf of the city. The signature of the city's executive on the pilot agreement may be maximally signature. The city executive is authorized to take all such further actions or to execute a test and deliver such further instruments and documents in the name of the city as in the city's executive's judgment shall be necessary or advisable in order fully to consummate the pilot agreement and carry out the purposes of this ordinance. By adopting this ordinance, authorizing and directing the city executive to finalize and execute the pilot agreement and authorizing the pilot payments, the city has undertaken all required actions contained within the Act. If any section, paragraph, or provision of this ordinance shall be held to be invalid or unenforceable for any reason, the invalidity or unenforceability of such section, paragraph, or provision shall not affect any of the remaining provisions of this ordinance. All ordinances, resolutions, and orders or parts thereof in conflict with this provision of the ordinance are to the extent of such conflict hereby repealed. The ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and shall automatically terminate upon the termination of the pilot agreement. And that's it.
Yeah, so just to recap for everyone, we're talking about Oak Street Village development. And again, members of council, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight and for discussion here. But as part of this development, we're proposing 50 units of affordable housing, workforce housing for the citizens of Legote. We've discussed extensively sort of our policies and our plans to manage and make sure that this project is excellent. We are also proposing currently a 4,500-square-foot daycare. That could expand to be a little bit larger, but we're going to be signing up an architect this week to start actually drawing the daycare. We're also proposing as part of this project, some other community amenities, a park, sorry, a playground, a pavilion, pickleball courts, things like that that are community amenity and will bolster values of the property around and bolster the quality of life for the residents of Legote. As part of this development, this pilot agreement is important. As part of the state's sort of statute, it allows municipalities to actually leverage this tool to, in theory, invest in the project without actually deploying cash into the project. And so the total project cost right now that we're estimating budget is just over $14 million. And so, you know, our proposal is also to pay full market rate for the land itself. And so when you look at what we're trying to do from affordability standpoint for the residents of Legote, the pilot is really important to make sure that we keep operating costs down over that 15-year period. Operating costs include things like maintenance, onsite management that we will have, you know, reserves, you know, other costs, insurance, those kinds of things. Keeping the property tax down helps keep that affordability in place for the residents. And so if you sort of amortize the cost of the land, you amortize the actual pilot payments annually, and you look at it over a 30-year run, which 35 years is our actual compliance period for the project, there is a nearly $2 million revenue creation that'll be generated here over that period, which we think is an incredible value proposition considering that the city at this point, and we have no, we have no plans to come back to the city to ask for money for anything except for this pilot agreement. And so I would take any questions. I could talk more about some of the site work. Some folks had questions about site work and environmental stuff. We got our Phase Two completed. The Phase Two report said there's no further action required on the site, which is great. But we're going to take a couple of proactive and precautionary steps, including putting together a soil management plan, so that environmental, I've signed an agreement for them to put together a soil management plan for our construction company so they have a plan to manage anything unanticipated that may come up. And they're also going to proactively talk to the state's brownfields program and let them know what the Phase Two said, what that report entailed, and then detail the soil management plan as well with the state and just make sure it's on their radar. So we're proactive about it and are not needing to ask for forgiveness on any front. So as far as I'm concerned, everything is moving in a really good direction on the project overall. We are going to have several more approvals that we're going to need to come back to both the council and the plan commission on, including, and I'll really underscore the section that Mr. Tebberall read around, you know, the pilot agreement. We will still be negotiating the pilot agreement itself and making sure that everybody feels comfortable with the terms and the work that's being done on the site today is being accounted for in that actual final number. So there's a lot more work to do, but this ordinance is just the next step in the process to keep things moving forward. As of today, we're on track to close on financing in June. We just signed up German-American as the lender on the project. And so everything is looking really good there with their team and they're legal. So those conversations are progressing very well. We should be breaking ground on this project in July. We spent quite a bit of time with Bo on the site, talking about city utility challenges that we've encountered since we've done our work, our survey work out there. We're gonna, we're planning to extend the city sanitary main up. Right now, it stops right in front of the Humane Society. We're planning to extend that all the way up the site, that gravity-fed main, so that we can capture the daycare sanitary and the apartments, of course. We're also on the stormwater side. We're planning a retention pond to capture and slow some of the stormwater runoff. It's a pretty serious problem for the site right now and for the Humane Society in particular. So we're going to build that retention pond there that'll capture the water and siphon it off through the culvert that was put under the road per the conversation earlier. And we'll put some, we'll put some structures in place that will connect with our invert and allow us to utilize that culvert without tearing up the road. So again, all things are moving in a really positive direction. Tonight, we're just talking about the ordinance. Next month, we'll come back and actually discuss and hopefully with your blessing approve the actual pilot agreement, among other things that we'll need to break ground in July.
Get a motion to adopt the ordinance as Rand?
Yes, I am.
Have a second?
I'll be right there.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's been approved. Thank you. Step one? Step one?
Thank you.
Next up, last month presented on behalf of the city, the Comprehensive Economic Development Plan that was put together by Grant Sherfick. He's here this evening to answer any questions on that. We didn't take action that month, the meeting. 20,000 of the 30,000 is funded by grants on the ability to city to be responsible for 10,000 of the economic development head of money. So Grant's here to talk about that, answer any questions.
I appreciate the opportunity to be here and just wanted to come and give you the opportunity to ask any questions that you might have. I know that the proposal was submitted last month and discussed and I offered to Mike to be here tonight just to answer any specific questions that you might have and address any concerns that you might have.
Looking at this proposal, you plan on having public meetings, surveys, and I want to make sure that's not disveraged and it's actually going to be done. People will have an opportunity to participate, give their points of view. That'll be considered.
Yes, absolutely. So that's a big part of my approach to this process and how that would unfold is the community engagement piece. It is my belief that these economic development plans, oftentimes they get paid for because there's, in the past, they've gotten a lot of federal funding that's come in because of the road project or because of something else. And they've been kind of checked the box, let's say, and they get unfortunately put on a shelf and don't really get implemented. And my approach to this process is to engage with the residents, property owners, business owners, nonprofits, elected officials to come together and have a conversation about what are the needs for the community. Now certainly there is an aspect of these plans that are required by OPR, the state agency, to meet certain criteria so that, you know, you basically, you get points if you have a plan that is compliant with OPR when you're looking at state funding and/or federal funding. It doesn't preclude you from getting money, but it certainly does give you extra, extra credit, if you will, on the potential of getting funding. So it's important that we address those things, but my approach would certainly be one of collaboration with the residents and the community and the businesses and the nonprofits and elected officials to have a conversation about what they want and what they need in their, in their community that they live in. So that is absolutely paramount in my process of engagement.
And considering we've not updated our comprehensive plan for several years, this is necessary going forward.
Have you worked with other cities and towns, counties, done a project such as this?
I have not done a specifically comprehensive plan project with other municipalities. I have for the last 20 years worked in nonprofit and business arenas to do business and community development projects. to do business and community development projects, led teams and built collaborative teams to work on projects in a variety of different capacities. This is not something that I have specifically done for another municipality. When approached about the opportunity, I was very excited to do that. I did take into consideration when looking at what other firms charge for these, these plans, what, you know, this is my first one. And I'll be completely honest about that. And, but I did want to take that into consideration that this is, you know, I'm not expecting to get paid a fee like I would some of these other firms that have done it a long time. But I do believe that I have the experience and the knowledge and the background to successfully execute this plan for the city of Lagodi. Look forward to the opportunity, you know, having those conversations with, with the community to develop this strategic plan.
Well, I know you've worked with, closely with the alliance and with the county on a lot of issues very similar to this.
Yeah.
So, I don't have any questions about that aspect of it. I know you're still doing a lot of stuff behind the scenes in regards to those things, which would be a benefit to this comprehensive development plan, I think, at least from my perspective.
So I will say, you know, within the, within the last two years, been very involved with the county economic development organization, Jessica Potts, served on the board over that time. Recently stepped down from the board to pursue other opportunities like this and be able to work with municipalities. Was involved in helping to create the Shoals Main Street Organization and currently serves as the president of that organization. And as well as being a business owner in Shoals and also engaged with various other nonprofits and other community development projects. And so I just see this as another opportunity to get involved and help to develop, promote, develop, you know, the communities here. Lagodi certainly has a lot of potential and I think there's a lot of opportunity here to, that, you know, bringing everyone together and looking at what is the potential, what are the assets we have available to us right now that we can, you know, further develop and leverage to get additional funding and to get additional, these additional type of economic development projects done, so.
But don't take this the wrong way. Joe will tell you, I'm pretty conservative on a lot of things. And city's money is one of them. Twelve thousand dollars if we agree to the contract. Come back in a month or two, according to your timeline here, another twelve thousand at the midpoint. Let's just say forsake of argument. After the first couple of months, we don't see what we need to see. We don't, we don't think it's on the right track. I'd like to have some safeguards where we could end the contract and not be responsible for the other eighteen thousand. I'm not questioning your abilities or anything like that. I just want some safety for the city on its expenses.
Oh, I.
If you are in agreement with that.
Yeah. I would certainly entertain that as part of the contract. And I would, you know, this proposal doesn't necessarily lay out all the terms and conditions, but I would, I would certainly put certain deliverable, milestone deliverables into each one of those phases in the agreement. And if those milestones are not, not met and/or not acceptable to the council, then there would be a provision in the agreement to, to stop the, stop the contract. I'm perfectly available for that.
And I think it's up, you need to be done. I'd just like to have some safeguards.
Sure. Need a motion?
Is this to accept this as, as is, or?
It would be.
Accept the.
Proposal.
Accept the comprehensive economic development finance provision.
And then I would, I would like to have the safeguards added.
He said he would make those as part of the contract.
Yeah.
Stephen will look at that.
Yes.
So is your motion?
Yeah.
Carol seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Grant, very much.
Thank you.
Next up, pay application number seven for country court five. Michelle?
Thank you. I just have a couple pay applications tonight regarding the ready projects here in the city. The first one tonight is pay application number seven for breast construction and that is on the country court infrastructure project. There's pay application number seven. Has for they had worked out sanitary sewer, lateral manholes and horse veins, some stormwater piping, water service lines, and of course for additional storage materials yet. They haven't had them installed yet. And pay application number seven is for a hundred and eleven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents. And this pay application will be paid with ready funds exclusively. So we will be sending that draw request for reimbursement of that payment with those funds.
Have a motion to approve the paid application for country court five number seven. Carol makes the motion in a second.
I'll second.
Second's all in favor?
Aye.
Pay application for Church Street, which is the pavilion green space area.
Pay application number five tonight for approval. And it is in the amount of a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty-four dollars, twelve cents. Basically, it would be paying for some topsoil and site work, backfill there, also some site concrete and the part of the pavilion install and a portion of the electrical as well. And it looks to be about six, seven, eight. I know that there, it looks like there has been, hasn't been a whole lot done due to some of the weather and things. And I think they've also had some material issues too that have been on delay a little bit that has caused a little bit of that.
So the expectation is that it's be completed by June first. They're asking for somewhat of an extension, but Mayor Hader is not in agreement and I'm not either. We have some press coming up and other activities to be used down there. It's imperative that June first be the deadline. So on the record at this meeting, that's what we're saying.
So as far as that change order number two, it sounds like there's some discussion that needs paid for the non-approval of that tonight. Well, they requested sixty days, they requested.
Requested denied, and that's the vote? Yes. And Biden agreed? That request is denied, so we need to take action on the pay application for a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty-four dollars. That money's coming out of what?
This money here would be coming out of local funds.
Money that's already been appropriated?
Yes.
Make a motion. Carol makes the motion?
I'll second.
About seconds, all in favor? Thank you. Under essential business, I have two things I'd like to bring up to Bo. Crossroads, community crossroads, second wave of paving, when do we anticipate?
I haven't gotten a start date yet from.
Do you have the streets that we're looking at, or is that still?
Yes, that was on earmarked in the project.
Okay. The four speed limit digital signs that we purchased are in. We've saved, have we just decided exactly where the four are going? You know where a couple of them are going and when they're going to get put up? Just ask.
When I know where you want, that's when we'll get them out. I knew they were ordered and I knew they were received, but I haven't had any direction as to exactly where they were to be placed.
Well, Mayor gets back next week. It's probably big with him then. We have discussed it, but not for a while. No, Bloomfield Road was one, I think Park Street was another. I don't know where the others.
I'm not, I know Bloomfield Road. I wasn't even, I wasn't sure where the other three went.
Yeah, I don't know where, I know Park Street was mentioned. I didn't know there was a speeding situation out there, but.
It's so bad, I hadn't moved.
No more speeders now, huh, Bo?
There's other streets that we can, uh.
They work, 'cause I saw that every time I come in from fifty. Don't have them rush me. You do.
This, this, butcher boulevards and all.
Yeah. I think the state put these up. I don't know why they put this up here. Probably would have made more sense to be put up out by Dollar Market coming in town. It's kind of silly in town.
They work.
They work, they do work. But I've been noticing too, the last few days, big arc, there's blowing through thirty-five, forty mile an hour down here. So.
I'm not sure what determining factor they use to put theirs up. I'm guessing this one, because I believe, I may be mistaken, but I think it's thirty-five miles per hour up two rising and then it's twenty-five. That'd be correct. So that may be why they put it there.
Lagodi isn't the only city they put them in. They put in Jasper and Washington and those different places in the.
Bo, on that, I've had a couple calls. I believe it's East Washington Street up there. Side of the road, it's got the barrels and those things up there and that road. Is there any plans anytime soon to get that taken care of? Is that on the drawing board?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
It's going to be an extensive project for us, but there have been other things that we've had to prioritize in front of it.
I've been there a couple times.
I'm not happy with them, you know, but it's been open quite a while.
Yeah. And then two, we had talked about in, in country court five, the damage those vehicles trucks are having up there. I don't want people to think we just forgot about the weight limit thing, but it was deemed not.
After last month's meeting, traffic was diverted to the original country court road only. And that was discussed pre-construction. How it slid through the cracks, I don't know. But after last month's meeting, I contacted the contractor and Midwestern engineers. And that's been, that's been handled.
Thank you, Carol. Good, thank you.
Anything else? That's for motion to adjourn?
I make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody, for attending.
Mayor will be back next month.
Worthless mayor.